No, I didn't because. Okay, record of attendance, Lyndy, you good?
Yep.
Any conflicts of interest?
Not yet.
Additions or deletions and that's you, councillor, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship, I'd like to put transit on, please.
Good transit. Councillor Mooney?
Doug Molson Park, your worship, skate park.
Wait a minute, Doug Molson Park, skate park, this is all if we have time.
This is all we have time.
We have time, yep.
Yeah.
And discussion on festival events and there's just an article that I took out of the Chronicle Herald today that's quite interesting read.
Oh, was that Halifax's?
Grants to festivals and events, yeah, it's quite interesting.
Councillor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship, my question is to the CAO and to Gerry, do you still need someone to say, hey, we have to put some money in the budget for fireworks? Is that where it goes? Alright, thank you.
Good, motion to, oh, councillor, go ahead.
Just, just one item in camera if we have time, if not, I can wait for another time.
Okay.
I'm good.
You're good?
You shut me off there, yep.
Your light's still on, Danny?
It's still on, yep.
Yeah. You want your light still on?
No, no.
Okay, so a motion to approve the agenda as with the changes moved by councillor Langel, second by councillor Dennis, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried, so I'm gonna put you on and you're gonna explain exactly what you want. And I'll keep it under control.
Okay, so, so this morning, we're gonna continue on with our, with our budget process and in a few minutes, Mr. Varan is gonna hand out the budget binders. And in there are all of the estimates as they, as they exist, we're excited about the binders, as they exist right now. So, what we'd like to do today is, is walk through the estimates in detail, line by line. With the objective of having a budget ready to approve for the April seventeenth council meeting. Before April seventeenth, we have two scheduled budget meetings, one is today and the other is on Wednesday. So, we wanna make as much headway as we can today and if necessary, come back Wednesday and go at it again. With the objective of by the end of the day Wednesday, having the budget ready to recommend to council. So, in order to do that, what I'd like to suggest is this. As Gerry walks through the, through the binder and identifies each line item, if there are questions for clarification in terms of what that line item is about, then, then we should ask those questions at that time. What I'd like to suggest is that we then, if any, at each line item, if any councillor believes that the number should be different than what is in the budget, then, that we would speak up and say so at that time. So, I've got an example behind me on the big whiteboard. So, if we get to an item called truck tires and we don't have such an item, but let's suppose we had an item called truck tires, and in the budget is a number of thirty thousand dollars. And let's say Madeline believes that the, sorry to pick on you, Madeline believes the number should be ten thousand. We will add a line in, on the board, we will identify it as, as is done here and we can see by formula the net change in the budget. My suggestion is that we not debate that at that time, that we just give every councillor the opportunity to throw out possible changes, we put them on the board and when we're done going through the entire document, we come back and then debate these and discuss these potential changes. I can tell you the, the size of the issue or the deficit that we have to try and wrestle with is about a half a million dollars. So, it's gonna take a lot of, a lot of things, suggestions to get to that number. But as we go through it, I'd like to just have you, give you the opportunity to make suggestions, we'll put them on the board and debate them after we've gone through the entire binder if that meets with your approval.
Is, does anybody disagree with that? So, basically, we're just gonna say, this is what I think that line should be, no debate, we'll come back to it.
I'll put it on there, if I, if I get it wrong, if I miss it, you guys keep me on track here, make sure I get the numbers that you're suggesting. We'll put them up there and if we have, two people have two different ideas, we'll put one of them up there and we'll have the debate later.
Perfect.
Okay. Questions for clarification? Absolutely. Okay, so with, unless there are any other questions, I'm going to turn the, the show over to Gerry and he will pass out the binders and then, then walk through them.
Phil called red.
I apologize for the binder colors, but, you know. I had no influence on the colors, so.
I don't care. Thank you.
Before we dig into the, to the binders, I do wanna give you a couple of, make a couple of comments about what's in there and in these numbers. Jeff mentioned the, the issue of close to half a million and when you do open your binders, I'm unsure all of you have by now, we focus on the bold column, which is the actual budget for the year. But what's in those numbers, Jeff and I went through the priorities and we've put some money in to make sure things get done. So, with our bylaw review, I'm sure you remember, there was about a hundred thousand dollars that we talked about in that, for that line. So, we do have seventy-five thousand in the fourteen, fifteen budget and we put twenty-five thousand in the forecast to finish. We just didn't think we'd get started April first, so that's what we did on that one. The downtown revitalization, we talked about a hundred fifty thousand dollars potentially for this budget year that we're discussing. When we reviewed what would be involved in that, that would be more of a capital item. I'm just kinda giving an overview. So, when you look at the front page and you see four hundred and seventy-three thousand, these numbers are in there. So, we've got seventy-five for the bylaw review. The downtown, we looked at would be more of a capital nature, so those would be things in, in the capital budget, that hundred and fifty that we talked about. The investment readiness was a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar item and we do have that in the budget, the full amount. And we talked about tax agreements when we ran the numbers and when we looked at the Mariner Center being added in, when we netted it out, we, we put a number of forty thousand in there, so that forty thousand would be in continuum so every year. No, when we looked at our tax agreements.
Yes.
Our partnerships.
Yes.
When we looked at that whole tax issue and if we had all three people, all three partners involved in the Mariner Center, we would actually pay a little less for the Mariner Center. So, when we did all that, our, the effect to the town would be about a forty thousand dollar issue for the tax effects. So, we put in this four seventy-five, five hundred thousand dollar issue that we have today, two hundred and forty, we put two hundred and forty thousand dollars in for the priorities. So, that's in there. Okay, so it's not, we don't fix this problem today and then say, now, what do we do with our priorities, those numbers are in there. The other thing that just quickly is the tax, the revenue side on the taxes, we did not increase any taxes. We did adjust for the sewer charge difference or changes. So, all that really affected there was on the corporate or commercial rate. The sewer revenues will be going up from the commercial customers, but the commercial tax rate was dropped by an accordion amount. It was around seventy-five thousand dollar effect this year. So, it ended up being, I think that was a five cent. I can verify that quickly, but it's a five or six cent reduction in the commercial rate, just offset by the sewer rates. Yeah, okay, so all that's been done and all that's in these numbers. So, if you wanna just look at the page right after the title page, which is our page one, and it's just, that's the quick, high level summary. Okay, we show all of our revenues, budgeted at sixteen million, five sixty-one, and I'm just looking at the bold column. And we have budget expenditures of seventeen million, thirty-four thousand. Okay? So, that's the very high level kind of summary that you get on a monthly basis, just in a little different format. But like I say, the priority mining is in there, no change, the sewer rate effect on the tax, on the commercial tax rate's been done. So, you'll notice some, some of these sewer revenues go up later on, but you'll see the commercial tax rate down a little bit. Okay, I think the easiest thing to do after that, the very next page is just a quick summary of our budget expenditures on a percentage basis. Those numbers obviously are based on what's there today, so those numbers, depending on where we find some things, items to change, these numbers will change as well. But on a percentage basis, on the numbers that big, not a whole lot. I would like to comment on the fire department though, because where the fire department is thirteen point four-two percent. That's the full cost of the fire department and we actually get of that, based, based on the format, it's a thirty percent charge out to the municipality, but there are a few things that get deducted before that thirty percent's applied. So, that thirteen point four-two would net down to around ten percent.
Jer, what about?
It'll net down to around ten percent.
Yeah, yeah, please.
Thank you, Jer. Council and administration, is that including like yourself, Jeff, does that include Jody, Sybil?
Yes. Yep.
What about somebody like Russell? Bylaw enforcement officer?
Russell would be in services.
Okay, okay, good.
We'll get to the details here shortly. Okay, so just when I was doing up, doing this chart up, I looked and I kinda said, well, that's, you know, not, not fair to the chief, I guess, to say, hey, cost us thirteen point four percent when we actually bill back a portion of that to the municipality. The next page is just our, our summary of what we get from the property valuations and that's just there for information, we can look at it later, but we base those, those are the assessments we work with when we build our budget and apply our tax rates. At this point, I think the next section is kind of a, it's still a summary section, but in a little more detail than the front page. So, I'd like to skip right back to page six and on the, which is the, after the next green page. And that's where we get into our line item details and we'll walk through this section. So, right after a green page, there should be a page six, the page numbers are faint from the copier, but.
No.
After the next one, we're gonna skip that one section.
Just on the, they're all numbered on the bottom, page six.
Yeah, two or three inserts that work, don't have numbers, but they should have page numbers on them. So, this is our tax revenue and as you can see, we, our revenue from residential and commercial, very large numbers, that's where most of our tax comes from, our revenue comes from, a good seventy percent or so. We also do, you know, that's where our garbage collection, our sewerage, so you'll see an increase in the sewer rates this year from actual last year. That's part of our strategy on a five-year plan of increasing the use, the cost to users for base rates and, and usage on sewer. But we did, you'll notice a change on the commercial taxes going down and that's because the rate for commercial taxes have gone down as well. So, that adjustment's been done in there. We do get de-transfer tax, this year, you'll notice, we budgeted a hundred and fifteen, it's a little less than the actual this year, but there was one, one transaction that would basically cover that full difference, so we don't expect a transaction like that again next year. So, overall, we'll end up with a tax revenue of about twelve, twelve point two million. And what I've done, and I don't know if you want to as well, I've pulled page number one out so you can see where it flows through. So, that twelve point two million flows right through to the first, first line on the summary page.
Councillor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship, I'd like to go back to residential and commercial taxes that you're budgeting.
Yep.
Are you taking any delinquencies in, into consideration with this or are you just expecting a hundred percent to pay?
No, every year, we, we budget, it's not for delinquencies there, delinquencies will get covered off in our allowance for doubtful accounts.
Alright, thank you.
But what we do, we do budget a hundred percent and then we turn around and we allow for appeals.
Thank you.
And we know just based on the last seven or eight years that I've been here, a rough number that that works out to.
Good, thanks.
Okay. So, again, at the bottom of this page six, you'll see twelve million, two hundred and seventy thousand and that number flows right through to the first line on your summary page for tax revenues. Any question on the tax revenues at all, any other questions? The next page are grants and lieu, again, pretty straightforward, these are numbers that we send in, we send in different information to the different agencies and these are typically pretty, pretty consistent numbers. So, we'll know now that are a little difference in our federal one, two seventeen, down to two hundred, and that's just due to the ferry terminal. Ferry terminal a few years ago was fifty, sixty thousand, this current year that we're finishing today is about seventeen thousand, so we won't get that seventeen thousand next year. That's the only real difference there. So, these are other government levels not paying taxes, but we do get grants and lieu. Now, the grants and lieu are not necessarily the full tax amount, but this is what we get.
Go ahead, Deputy.
Gerry, just, I see under grant in lieu of taxes, provincial liquor commission, it's been zero there.
Yeah, I can.
Do we still, do we still need to leave it there or?
No, we can get rid of that line at this point. Those, the, the liquor stores are in private buildings now, so we get commercial tax on those, so we don't get a grant, that was the change there. The next page, page eight, starts with our services to other governments. And the, the top half of this page runs down into the fire service and how that's calculated off. So, you'll see that we do a bit of calculation in the top page and about halfway down, you'll see fire service, municipality district of Yarmouth and that number next year will be five hundred and fifty-six thousand. Okay, so that's the part that I, like I say, that will end up billing back to the municipality. Sewer agreements, sales of services, you get into some smaller numbers and I'm not sure if there's anything else you wanna discuss on that page, it's pretty straightforward. Flip over to page nine, we continue on with other revenue from own services. Again, this is where all of our permits, fees, dog licenses, those types of things flow through. Lot of small amounts that come through that add up, park fines and fees you'll see. Organic tipping fees, you'll see what's going on there with the organics, we know that there's another composter out there now and so our current year shows as our operation's still in there.
Jer, demolition fees, one straight fee?
Demolition fees.
So, like fifty dollars or is it seventy-five?
Yeah, it's a straight, it's basically a coming and getting a permit kind of thing.
So, this, all of this whole page nine must total at one point six, right?
This whole, yes, it continues on to the next page and comes up to the one point six for other revenue from own sources.
Oh, there it is, okay, sorry. Alright, go ahead, oh, councillor Dawes?
Thank you, just a quick question, most of the numbers, okay, between thirteen, fourteen budget and this budget, most of the numbers, most of the numbers are the same except for the taxi car and driver's licenses, you've increased those by five hundred. What are you basing that on, are you expecting more taxis to?
Just discussions with Russell, looks like there's a little more activity with taxis and I know he just issued a license and another one, so.
Oh, good, that's good.
So, again, they're, these numbers are pretty consistent, they don't, not a lot of variance from year to year or year over year. The one thing really that's going on in our other reps, revenue from own sources has to do with the organic tipping fees. We're all up to date on what's going on there. Over on page ten, again, all pretty, pretty consistent, we base the interest on investments, taxes, sewer accounts, they're all separated out. We have, because we're doing a little better on some tax collections and some things, you'll see the interest on those amounts coming down. We did lower our rate there a year ago as well, so that had some effect. As you move down through the other section, we, we started with the, the big number there. We get basically a grants and lieu forty thousand about halfway down the page, which is from our port waterfront development or the, I see the industrial commission, correct Jeff? Yeah, that'd be the school board building actually. We, the water utility pays the town a hundred thousand dollar dividend now, we've built that in. And we have some dispatch fees of twenty-nine thousand to the different fire departments that we do now. You'll see we get a grant and lieu for the medical clinic and our total revenue from own sources, one point six million does flow through right to the front page. The bottom of that page is number six, seven and eight, again, pretty, pretty similar for prior years, the conditional transfers, we don't budget anything there. Those are typical things that, as you can see from the, from the titles, kind of things that may or may not happen. So, there's, you're never guaranteed any money coming in for future projects, so these are the kind of things that just happen during the year. And we booked some money for sick leave reserve, so those numbers will flow through to the front page again, number six, seven and eight and give us a total revenues of sixteen million, five hundred and sixty-one thousand. So, pretty straightforward with the revenues on the town's operating budget. Again, the, the main changes in revenue were the sewer rates and the commercial tax rate and then the organic tipping fees.
Yep, go ahead, sorry.
Gerry, do, do we, we budget for sick leave, that's, that's good.
Yeah.
Is that sick leave for all of the town staff?
That's everybody, yes, all departments.
Do we, do we use it up?
No, we basically, that goes into kind of a, the sick, sick leave reserve. So, upon retirement, some sick leave is paid out, so we book that and then the others, we do a calculation on the whole pool at the end of the year and there isn't an audit adjustment usually. So, again, on the revenue side, only a couple of changes from prior years. Commercial sewer rates, commercial taxes and organic tipping fees, those would be your three main changes for the year. Okay, let's get into the fun stuff on the expense side of things. Page eleven, start with our general government services. Come through with council expenses of stipends and then you get your pensions and liability insurance. Pretty consistent, the, any increases for CPI thing all the way through the budget for salaries and wages is built in already. The meeting and travel, I've combined what we, we used to have a UNSM conference lines and FCM conference lines and then regular travel and meeting for council, so those three amounts are all combined into this one section now.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Gerry, just looking at my expenses and just mine alone, mine just seems kinda high. I didn't go to FCM or that, to Vancouver and that, but mine was still sixty-eight hundred dollars.
Yep.
That's, I must have done a lot of meetings and traveling. Is there a breakdown of that?
We could certainly get one, but yes, you know, everyone's travel is budgeted and put, expensed in specific GL numbers. So, from those GL numbers, we can go back and see where, where any all travel has been done.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind getting, but that's coming up online, I think anyway, isn't it, or?
Yep, I've got files on my desk right now, I've started summarizing to see where people traveled and what they went on.
I, I, it just seems kinda high to me and it's, it's probably accurate, cause your, your, your work is accurate, so, but I'd just be kinda curious where and where and when I went, that's all.
Yep.
Thank you.
Councillor Langel, go ahead.
Yeah, on that meeting and travel, Gerry, I'm kinda surprised that I've traveled more than the mayor. I'm curious, how can that happen, because I haven't been out of town since FC, since FCM, since UNSM on anything, yet I'm looking at the mayor's amount as sixty-four, forty-six and I know Pam is away a lot and I'm sixty-five, ninety-five and I'm thinking, I'd like to get a breakdown. I'm curious how that can be, is, or is, or is the mayor reported on a separate line somewhere else, is there other?
No, no, like I say, there were, there are three lines that we had for travel for councillors and the mayor, so this is just a summary of those three lines put together.
Go ahead.
Say we go through, say we go to like the recreation conference, that'd be included?
Yep, if it's councillor's travel that goes through this line.
So, so I go to FCM and I speak, they don't charge, they don't even charge the, there's things that I don't get charged, so it's. Good, councillor Langel, go ahead.
Yeah, just a, a, a second one on that, I was curious, now, I noticed and I know last year, for example, I, one of my biggest expenses was a trip to the water conference. Now, was that taken out of the water utility or was that taken under the town council line?
All the councillor travel goes through these lines.
So, they would go through these lines?
Yeah, it's not based on what committees you're on and that kinda thing, this is your. See, that should have been. The only travel charged to the utility is, there's some travel in there for Dave.
Because that's, that's a hu, that was a huge chunk and I know councillor Dawes went on that, oh no, councillor Dawes didn't charge any expenses on that, so that was no charges for her. Okay, yeah, I'm just saying because, as I, we brought this up at council the other day, like I really am into going at least once to a water utility. There's some really good water conferences and it's been beneficial, but if that's coming under the council stipend, I don't think that's proper. To me, I think that should be coming under the water utility, we should have a lie underwater. But if that's coming under the council stipend, I don't think that's proper, I, to me, I think that should be coming under the water utility, we should have a line under water utility for that. To me, because they're not technically, I mean, we gotta make a decision, either we're gonna be a separate corporation or we're not. Because to me, the water utility is a separate corporation, I went up, not as a councillor, but as the chair of the water utility, to a water utility conference, and I'm representing the water utility, not the town at council. Now, the water utility is a separate entity all by itself, at least it should be, that's the way we've got it set up to UARB, uh, so that's why I brought the, the question up on those lines, because I'm wondering myself and councillor Dawes, is that really should be charged against the water utility, I would suggest, versus the town, because it's a separate corporation. This, my thought.
What's that? There's not to be a budget for, um.
I mean, it's too late for last year, we've done it, but I'm thinking, I did bring it up on Thursday, uh, at our regular meeting, that we should put a line in place on the water utility for travel for the members, I mean, either myself or maybe another member of the board may wish to go, I think that line should be there, uh, for that. I, I don't think it's proper to bill it back to the town, you know, because you do have a separate corporation there, and that's, should be a line, and if staff, like the engineer, can bill his conference to that line, there should be no reason why a member of the board, the employer, can't be billing their expenses to that line. This is my thought.
Uh, councillor Dawes. Thank you, your worship, I look at this, this line here, and I had no idea I had so much fun last year. Yes, but I also went to FCM. That's, that's not a cheap, that's not a cheap ticket item. Now, uh, this brings, uh, this begs, uh, this begs another, another question or two or three. Uh, should, should we consider setting up special, special little budgetary lines and accounts for the various committees and boards? Uh, just as an example, it was brought up, great, good, good, good suggestion. Uh, councillor Dennis is, uh, is on Yesta, um, and just Saltscapes as an example coming up, I think it's next month. Uh, she is going up, does, uh, in that, just by virtue of her being, sitting, representing the town on Yesta, the cost of her going up to represent the town is then going to be charged against her personal or her councillor, councillor count. Should we, could we, is it advisable to consider setting up separate lines per committee or board in the budget? Should we consider it, would it work, and if so, how much would we even, how much would we even, uh, uh, budget for it? I'll leave that up to everybody now to dissect and.
Okay, um, all right. So, do you have a, are, are we gonna, can we come back to this at the end, because that's, that's the idea?
That's debatable.
That's, that's a debatable item. So, yeah, did you have a question for clarification, councillor?
I've got, no, I'm.
Your hand doesn't work, but you.
I, uh.
Go ahead.
No, I, I'm, there's so many things, he, he was, I'm getting into his conversation and I'll have to get back to, I, I forgot what I wanted to ask, but, uh.
So, we're gonna?
No, yes, I, I, I remember right now.
Okay, go ahead.
No, uh, my question would be to Jerry. Jerry, when we went to the recreation conference in Sydney, we billed it through the municipality, did you bill it through the town of Yarmouth, or? We, we, we went on, me and councillor Mooney went on the municipality's recreation budget.
Okay, so those, those should have been forwarded on to the municipality to pay.
Well, we did, but it's.
Okay, so that wouldn't be in our numbers?
It wouldn't be on there.
These numbers are what the town paid.
Okay, that's what I want to make sure of, okay, great, thank you.
Good, councillor Dawes? Thank you, your worship, I didn't mean to hold everything up, I didn't, I don't want to hold the process up, so I'm now gonna waste a little more time and say that if I can put that under, under a suggested line, so we can look at it later.
You're not, you're not looking at an actual change, though, you're looking at a reallocation of how you divvy up this forty-three thousand dollars?
Does it qualify as like what you suggested?
Put it, we'll make another tab, how's that?
Yeah, it's a different ballgame. Good, okay, councillor, go ahead.
And I, I feel like a baseball game, strike three here, um, that request regarding the water utility, is that something we can do, or will be done, because this is the second kick, we brought it up, okay, good, so it will be looked after, good.
That? No, I'm just thinking if, if what can just does affects what it does, because it all comes out of the town, just a matter of reallocation, yeah. Okay, good, are you good there, Jeff?
Yep.
All right, go ahead, Jer. Thank you.
I guess I'll just, any further questions on this, page eleven? We're good, let's go forward to page twelve. We get through the administration side of things. Total salaries and benefits for administration, um, yeah, I will make the comment that if you look at this floor, the people that work on the floor of this building, we do allocate salaries and wages out to the different, um, the water utility and administration. So all the water, I mean, we do the, all the paperwork, all the receivables, payables, billings for the water utility. So there are different people on this floor that are billed out to different, to the water utility. So, uh, based on the consistent percentages, we don't change those from year to year and any of that, so if we've hired somebody or someone, or if a position's filled, and that position is seventy percent admin and thirty percent water utility, that's how their salaries are billed out, so.
Jerry, what about legal expenses, I see we, uh, budgeted last year seventeen-four, actual was fifty-two-five, and we just budgeted nineteen-four?
Yeah, there was a settlement this year that went through that line.
Deputy?
Under office lease, uh, Jerry, it's, uh, is that, that's equipment in, in, within the town hall? Copiers?
Office lease, twenty-two-eight, that's the actual, what we charge out for the building, we're trying to show what it costs to run the town, so you'll see.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so what we did a number of years ago is we, we looked at the space required for all of our operations, and we built in lines, you'll see them throughout the budget, for office lease and, and for, um, for vehicle lease. So that, it, it's basically, it's kind of an amortization, it's an allocation of cost of maintaining this building at a, a commercial rent raise, rate, and it's non-cash, it's, it's a, but it is meant to reflect that, that you, if you, if you were to put the administration somewhere else, right, there's, there's a cost to housing the administration.
Councillor Dawes? Thank you, your worship, under bank charges, Jerry, that was budgeted last year for three thousand, actually it was forty-three hundred. Um, I remember that the bank, uh, was it the, the bank itself, you changed the bank that, uh, that the town was using? And that was to, to, that was to save thousands and thousands, I don't know how much, what was it, thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars?
Yeah, we're doing, um.
But here, it's, it's not much, it's, uh, we only over.
Yeah, we've been trying a few things this year, um, we've been trying, uh, we've been setting up automatic, uh, I guess, payments to us by our customers, so some people have asked that we just reach in their bank account and take money out to pay their bills. So we've been trying some of that kind of stuff on test basis, so there are some fees associated with that, and we've been go, doing this for about four or five months now, and trying to work out the bugs of it, uh, just getting it organized. So we have, right now, I think, three people that we've, that requested, and we said, we're, we'll use you as a test if you don't mind, and they're good with that. So, right now, it's just been a flat amount, we haven't, like, said your water bill's a hundred and fifty-four dollars, and we're gonna take a hundred and fifty-four dollars out. We say your water bill's roughly a hundred and fifty dollars per quarter, so we reach in and take fifty bucks a month out of their account. So we're just testing that, we've got about three people doing that, and we've got two of the same people and one other person, I think, doing the same thing with their tax account. So, with, just with the changes in staff and what's been going on this last four or five months, I'm just hesitant to throw it out there broad, broad stream, but we're, we're close to doing that for people and advertising that we can do that. So, that's all.
That's quite a hike, now, we do, you do anticipate, we expect, that more people will be, will be choosing that, that, that way?
Yeah, we're just trying to streamline how we do it, and the workload on both our end and the bank's end, and then, like, we'll be able to set some people up.
Work out on a.
You know, there'll be no, there won't be much difference if we have two hundred people doing or three people doing it, as far as charges go, cause it's like per time the charge, and then there's like a per, per file charge, or per, per person charge, so the per person's very small. But every run that you do, there's a base fee, basically, so. That's all, that's most of that. So.
Councillor Dennis?
Uh, yes, Jerry, could you explain what the election expense is?
Yeah, well, that's where we, um, we basically budget and put, put aside about seven thousand dollars a year, so then in the fourth year when we have our elections, we don't have a thirty or forty thousand dollar expense all in one year. Uh, so we budget seven thousand, this year is a, a minus in there, because, uh, we, we paid for all the expenses last year, but because of some different legal things going on, we didn't actually bill it all back until this year. So we bill the school board for their portion of the election costs, and so, we should have, it's, it's one of the things we just missed with the year in, and, and, uh, by not setting up a receivable from the school board for that amount, so the full revenue came through this year.
What did that cost us in school board?
That's the actual amount there, I would say. I don't think, I don't think the seven thousand's in that amount, so it wasn't thirty-one.
That was, that was exacerbated by the challenge to the election results.
Yes.
Right, so there was a legal process that, that had gone on there as well, so, that is, that is their cost associated with that.
And it's.
And, you know, I don't want to get into, into that debate, we'll have to have it sometime fairly soon, ahead of the next election, but uh, the electronic voting worked but for that one issue, which was the, the qualification of electors for that particular ballot, right?
Which was not clear. Regardless, that's what we done.
Councillor Mooney?
Is that a conversation we're gonna have with the school board again? Because I thought the electronic balloting, except for the, uh, school board issue, went very well.
Well, it, it's probably a discussion that should be held, uh, provincially, because the legislation applies to all school boards across the province, and many municipalities went electronic this time, at this past election, and more will go next time, but for this kind of issue, and so if there is, if there is some way of reaching a consensus with the province in terms of how you present a ballot, uh, to a qualified elector, uh, that you can self-declare, but, you know, it's, it's a bit of a.
I think, uh, your worship and Jeff, I think if I went up, uh, if I voted manually, and we had that opportunity to do so, even though it was still on the screen, I don't think, uh, or say they were doing it in the municipality of Argyle for the African Nova Scotia school board seat, they can't deny you a ballot if you ask for it.
No, they can't, the, the, so the challenge was about the clarity, apparently some people made a mistake. I don't think we would have had the same issue had there been a contested, uh, regular tri-county school board election. But because there wasn't, and people were looking for a ballot, I don't think they perhaps read the instructions, uh, about eligibility for that ballot.
I think it's something we should bring up maybe at the, uh, UNSM level, then yourself, when you're meeting with the, even, I think the agenda's already set for the the spring one, but I think it's something we should be bringing up in the fall, except we, except when the, except the election's two years hence, so we should be looking at that right now.
If there's, if there's a legislative, uh, fix to this, it takes time, right, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Good, go ahead, Jer.
So just moving down to halfway through the page, you'll see the tax rebate section, that's our low income, um, grants that we give out for taxes, we budget thirty thousand a year. The next section, I didn't get back to, uh, adjust to actuals, uh, for this current year, but I will do that, now that those have been done by Linda, I guess, and we figured out what the different tax amounts to the different organizations will be. But the bottom line of three oh five is what we budget for the year, so I will adjust where the budget numbers go for this year, which organizations. Uh, so that'll be adjusted to what councils have already approved. Um, and then you get into some building maintenance lines, um, and get into our, the bottom part is, um, again, some retirement awards, some sick time, and post-deployment benefits that end up happening upon people retiring. So we book those amounts on an annual basis, and then on the, upon the audit, the auditors come in and we do an actual calculation on what the pool should be, and that's where the adjustment gets to.
Councillor Dawes? Thank you, your worship, what happened with our air control maintenance, that would, that, that really jumped, from budget to actual. What cost us sixty-eight hundred dollars?
Would have been something in this building.
Where, which, which line are we looking at?
She's looking just, just on the building maintenance, the bottom line of the building maintenance.
Whoa.
I'm not sure, I would have to look it up. Any questions on that page? Okay, page thirteen is the, the, the remainder of the total government, general government, uh, costs. Some computer things, the office, the entertainment, website expenses, uh, and different, uh, equipment, maintenance and equipment purchasing lines for small amounts. Uh, the bottom is the grants to organizations. But we spend the full day Saturday, dish, dish and out, so, but we budget the full eighty thousand there, and we budget, we still have in here the budget for five thousand for the mayor's approval. If you don't spend everything that you budget?
Yes.
It'll flow through the bottom line.
This is, uh, five thousand, nine hundred and nineteen dollars, yeah, so where does that go?
It just goes through our bu, our surplus account.
Thank you.
I hardly, I hardly touch it. But you were really good at, you were really good at that.
So the.
Phil's gonna help me spend that.
Yeah, he's got today.
He's got today. I don't know, I think there's plenty of time, Phil.
Yeah, we got her covered, okay.
So total general government services, the one point seven million flows through your first expenditure line on the summary page, one point seven million. Over on page fourteen, protective services, we start with the police, um, the top section is administrative salaries through there, uh, the big number, of course, is the RCMP contract of one point seven million, or one point eight million, right in those, that number, uh, we do budget, um, a little less than a full complement, because it's rare that we have a full complement of our CMP here, so we found we were budgeting the full amount, and then we'd have, be a hundred thousand or a hundred and fifty thousand under budget, so, uh, based on the last seven or eight years, we do budget anywheres from fifty to a hundred thousand less than what their full contract would cost us. So you might see in, this year, the actual's a little bit more than what we budgeted, but that's why. There is some fluctuation in their contract as well, based on overtime and that kind of thing, but typically, there's more overtime when we have fewer staff, so we save on that side.
Has a new police station coming, Jeff?
Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Jerry, we've got, um, we had, the engineering specs are pretty much ready.
They're done, I think he's ready to go to tender.
Been, uh, projected out, and the costs are within the capital budget, which was approved, so, uh, that should be going tender shortly.
Okay, and as we continue on down that page, you get some of the police station costs, um.
Excuse me.
We left them the same as, uh, last year, budget-wise, uh, relatively new building coming in, there shouldn't be two. coming in, there shouldn't be too many, uh, changes, but the numbers aren't huge. The one that might fluctuate a bit will be the power expense, but we're not sure to what level, so, um, just to be consistent, we'll go with those numbers for this year and see how we work out with the new building. So total police protection is up being $2.18 million. Uh, we get bylaw enforcement, um, salaries and benefits and some expenses through there, uh, total bylaw enforcement of $46,000. Questions on page 14? That's police services and the bylaw enforcement.
Councilor Langel?
The, that does not include Warren, right? That's just Russell?
That's Russell.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry, that's, um, that's a part of Russell. Part of Russell's also allocated to admin for tax collection, I believe. So.
So he's allocated somewhere else as well?
That's not 100%, yeah, that's, that's a part of a.
Okay, it's part.
Part of an employee.
Yeah, we don't, uh, we make sure that when we have staff here, they're multi-talented, and they get charged off their different duties. We don't have one person for every job.
That works. Councilor Dennis?
Just wondering on the RCMP telecom service, what is that service?
Telecoms is 911, which is in Truro, used to be here.
Yeah.
But we would pay a service to.
Every municipality is charged a fee based on formula, and so that is what we get charged under our contract.
It's, it's dispatching. No, it's, it's, every single call comes in through the RCMP, so, through there, but we have to pay for it. Go ahead.
Okay, good, thanks.
Yeah.
Yeah, so because our contract, and I, I believe this is true, Jerry, correct me if I'm wrong, but our, our federal contract, direct contract, causes that to be an expense, such as DNA testing. The DNA testing under the provincial contracts that most municipalities have, that's part of the contract.
I think so.
And the telecom, same thing. But the difference is, is if we had, if we had agreed and signed up for the provincial contract, like most other municipalities, uh, we would be paying for a full complement of officers, whether they're there or not. And so, when we did the analysis last year on, on which contract would we be better off with, to stay with our federal direct contract, or to switch to the provincial contract, there was a difference of, Jerry, half a million a year.
Yep.
But a half a million dollars a year, we're better off to stay within the contract we have and pay for those items as specific line items.
Good.
Okay.
Okay, it's page 15, we get into fire. Salaries, benefits, uh, the water supply to hydrants, that's a bill that we get from the, that would be the bill we get from the, uh, water utility, uh, for having, providing water, and having water available for fire hydrants.
Councilor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. Would you explain the union and non-union salaries?
Uh, based, based on position, there's certain positions that are non-union out there.
I didn't know.
Certain positions that are, most are union.
What, what, which are non-union, please?
One off the top of my head that I know is non-union is the chief.
He's non-union?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
There's, there's stuff that goes in there as well, but. After that, you get into the alarm systems, what we, uh, go through for training, and then the different firefighting equipment amounts. Um, again, pretty consistent. Chief went through, uh, through the budget fairly well this year, fairly, very thorough, I should say. Uh, so you'll see a few extra lines in there, like incident operations. So what he, what we did, uh, we took the total budget for the fire department, and he wanted to see some different items identified with a separate budget. So, you'll see incident operations for one, he wanted to put 10,000 in there, but he did reduce other line items, so his total budget did not increase.
Did you have a question, Phil?
Okay.
Right? You good?
I, I missed the honorary reference, someone on the bottom of the sheet.
Okay. Go ahead. Thank you. My own, yes.
Yes.
Um, remind me, please, we, we, we looked at and considered and spoke about leasing some equipment, uh, uh, vehicles, buying some, uh, were there any, were there any firefighting vehicles?
Not in this year's budget.
That we are buying?
Not this year.
No. All right, thank you.
Fire continues on to page 16. Uh, you get into costs of the building and running the building itself. And then we have the section that's other of a lot of smaller amounts. And, uh, we get through down to the total fire costing $2,335,000. So not a lot there. Building lease is the big expense there. And again, that comes back to our question earlier about how we allocate some expenses to have actual costs of these housing, different departments. After the fire, we get into the EMO, animal control and building inspector. And again, EMO is, uh, basically, most of that's billed to us from the municipality, so those are pretty consistent numbers. Animal control, um, again, relatively consistent, has been some ongoing negotiations. I think those are reflective of that. We'll have to verify that, because that was a recent development.
Councilor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. Back up to fi-, uh, fire other.
Sure.
Overall, yeah, we're down. But, um, the contract negotiation expense?
Mm-hmm.
More than doubled. Does that becau-, does that happen from time to time when, when contracts are, are come up for renewal?
Yeah, we do that, um, similar to the election expense. We'll book about $4,000 a year for the contract, and then every two or three years, we'll have the expense come through, so we don't get a big cost. So that, there might be, uh, I can verify on this year, as if the $4,000 from the prior year was netted out, but it should've been.
I didn't know it takes $6,000 to negotiate contracts.
Oh, my dear.
Oh, more than that.
That's cheap.
Really?
Yeah, the.
Well, yeah, I've never been part of a union, I have no.
We've, we've spent double that.
Whoa!
Yeah.
Over what period of time?
Sometimes it takes over a year.
Thank you.
Councilor Langel?
Just for, just for, uh, maybe context, your worship, if you don't want to.
Steal the microphone for one second, counselor, but the, the, yeah, yeah. Thank you, counselor. Jeff, and just put it in context, if you could just maybe, uh, in 20 or 30 seconds, explain the Truro fire contract and, and how far they went back, what the negotiations entailed. Because I know we were, we kind of got piggybacked on that.
I'm, I'm gonna guess at what you want me to say, but the, the Truro, Truro situation with their fire department, back in, uh, 2008, their contract came up, and, uh, they went to a, a very expensive arbitration process, uh, lawyers and the whole deal. And theirs was almost four years getting settled. So, running, running a tab for that long, uh, to settle your, your collective agreement, and at the end of the day, the, the settlement was, uh, there, there weren't huge gains or losses. It was sort of like, they, they picked the middle ground between the two, the two, uh, positions of the parties, the employer and the employees. And, uh, but that does have an effect on every unionized fire department, uh, because, of course, when they go to, to, uh, to put forward their, their requests, uh, they always use comparability, right? Comparability, what's a firefighter get paid in Truro should be comparable to what a firefighter gets paid in Yarmouth. So, Truro, uh, carried the, carried the tab on that one initially, but then when we went to, we went to arbitration on our, uh, our collective agreement, uh, four years ago, and, you know, the Truro, the Truro decision weighed heavily on, uh, on ours.
Councilor Langel?
Um, just a little quick question. Um, under EMO, EMO miscellaneous, it's nice round number, large. Isn't that a little large for, and miscellaneous?
It's, it's the rest of the budget.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
On our side, again, we get a bill from municipality for, and it's just broken up. They give us a bit of detail, but we just put it into coordinator expense, and then the rest goes in the one line.
We call it overhead, whatever it's, yeah.
Change it to overhead.
Miscellaneous, like 400, 500.
Yeah. That's a round number.
We can change the description for you.
Councilor Dawes?
You're good. Thank you, your worship. Just one, I have to, I have to, I'm in love with this. This is, this has just blown me over. Contract negotiation expense, um, only once, only once ever in my life was I ever approached to join a union, and I questioned, uh, if I have to considerably think of joining a union, perhaps I'm applying at the wrong place to work. So I have no, I have no experience with, with, with unions. So, my question is, is this the only, uh, contract negotiation expense area that we, that we have to look at, that we, that, that, that we have to consider, or are there others? Should, should a, should we have a, a complete total, um, uh, contract negotiation expense line in our budget to cover all of them? How many are we looking at, potentially?
We have, uh, we have two unions, we have two collective agreements. Uh, QP represents our, uh, our public works and water utility workers, and, uh, the International Association of Firefighters represents the, uh, fire department staff. So, uh, typically, and, and it's true again this most recent time, is, is we strike four-year contracts. So this comes up once every four years. So we budget the expense over four years, and we incur it in one year. So this year, our expense was about $10,000, but we would've budgeted 15,000 to 20,000 for it. And so, under the, uh, under environmental health, there's probably another, uh, contract negotiation line, and that one would relate to our negotiations with QP. So we keep the two separate, because the fire service negotiations are very specific to the fire department, and our fire department budget, part of our deal with the municipality, is they pay 30% of the previous year's actuals. And so they are on the hook for 30% of that number next year.
Any further questions, I guess, on page 16, where was, was the balance of the fire department? We got animal control, EMO, and building inspection.
Animal control. Okay. Let's not go. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Next page, we get into transportation services. So the first part is, I guess, common services, which were salaries and benefits, and some of the office stuff gets billed out. You'll see the bottom line on that first section, it's called negotiator, that's the contract negotiations. And I'll have to fill in the amounts in the forecast, see those got zeroed out some, at some point. But typically, we do the same thing there, we'll book around 5,000 a year for that. And then when the contract comes up, we have a little pot of money to help pay for it all. Get into the general equipment, maintenance and fuel. Um, again, relatively consistent. Small tools and equipment, you'll see a little fluctuation there. I think there was, uh, this year, there was a $15,000 tool Dave was looking to get, if my memory serves me right. Uh, shops and buildings, you could telephone, again, maintenance, power, insurance, fuel, those types of costs.
Councilor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. Can we go back up to transportation service, uh, common services, secretary salary? Could you explain that, please?
That would be a portion of administrative support for transportation. So there's Sabrina, and potentially some small percentage of someone up here, I think, for billing and backup.
So they, is this in addition to their, their, their regular salary?
No, this is where it gets charged.
This is where it's split up?
Yep.
Uh, thank you.
So part would be in the water utility as well, right? Because.
Is what going down because we have a new roof? Because it.
He thinks you won't.
Oh.
No, 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 no.
Oh, okay.
Sorry? Kill her. I haven't finished reading that yet.
Councilor Dennis?
Um, what's the negotiator expense?
Again, that's the same as, uh, what we've done with the fire. We have another union that handles the, the QP side.
Okay.
So we'll book typically 5,000 a year. I see the zeros got in the forecast, so we'll put that number back in. But typically, we'll budget, set aside 5,000 a year. So then in the fourth year, they will have a little pot of money to pay our negotiator that we hire.
Okay.
Good.
Any other questions on page 17? I'll take a minute to take, go through it.
A, a lot more, yeah.
The next page, page 18, you get into roads and streets. There are some bigger numbers here, where we have, uh, sidewalk repairs, asphalt paving and patching, uh, the asphalt crack sealing. Um, and again, then we get into different, uh, gravels and culverts and curb replacement.
Councilor Dawes?
Different maintenance, they're all maintenance type, these are not capital numbers.
Um, our road salt slash snow, uh, line item, that's gonna, that's gonna be up next year, isn't it, in next year's, isn't it? Yeah, yeah?
No, we've been, over the last eight years, 75 to 100,000, the last couple of years have been 95,000, is what we've budgeted.
Oh, yeah.
Um, again, this year, we've had a lot of snow, so we're over that.
Yeah.
But, uh, I guess.
It'll average out, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, if you want to take the quote from the Vanguard, it's like throwing a dart.
Now, the very first item.
There's no guarantee next year will be 125, there's no guarantee it'll be 50.
Yeah, yeah, I understand. Now, the very first line item here, the, uh, uh, transport or transportation, street maintenance, you have zero budgeted there. Would you explain that to me, please? I don't understand. There was zero in the budget for, for, for last year, for 13, 14, yet the actual.
Yeah, I'd, I'd have to look to see what Dave budget or billed through that line. Um, but typically, like, the street maintenance is all through our sidewalk repairs, asphalt paving and pa-, patching. Uh, street maintenance, that line's kind of not been used in a number of years, and it's normally just zeroed out, but there was something charged there this year, so I put it back in. Typically, Dave will have those in, in the asphalt paving and patching, or the sidewalk repairs. So. But we do budget, like I say, um, that, those are repairs, those are not new sidewalks, those are sections dug up and replaced. Uh, and the same with the asphalt paving and patching, that's all your. Patching.
I apologize, I'm pro-
Go, let her finish.
Oh, no, no, oh, sorry, I didn't see you, Danny, I didn't see you.
Ask the question.
All right, all right, thank you. Um, when it comes to the, um, ah, the, the streetlights that are going south on, uh, along Main Street on the sidewalks.
Yep.
There is, uh, there is no need to tear up any of the sidewalks, there's not gonna be any, any repair or, or, or replacement costs involved? Is that correct? Yeah, no, maybe?
Sorry, distracted?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
She's asking about the sidewalk repairs.
Sorry, I'm accused of, of killing an animal.
When the streetlights, you know, these pretty, the, the new streetlights that are going south along Main Street on the sidewalk, is there going to be any repair, any replacement costs, any dig up, nothing at all involved with the, with the sidewalks when that, when the streetlights go down? Street lamp posts?
Uh, there shouldn't, there shouldn't be with the sidewalks, as I understand it. What I understood from Mr. Ernst. What I understood from Mr. Ernst is that when the sidewalks were built, the conduits for the wires were installed, the, the pipes for the wires to go through.
Yes.
So it should be the case that, that the wires are, are fed through there, or pulled through there, that the sidewalks, I, I assume the bolts are there to, to affix these standards. Now, if the bolts are in the right places for the standards we end up buying, there won't be any modification necessary. But if the, if they don't line up, then there would be some minor modification just at the point where the, where the standards would be installed.
All right.
You could also use a, you could use, I'm just thinking out loud here, but it's possible if they don't line up that you could use some sort of an adapter plate to, to make it match.
Sounds good to me. I'm not an electrician, that's going over my head.
That, okay.
But the conduits, this, all the conduits, they are in place?
That's what I understand, and Counselor McCausick might have some background on that as well. No? Okay.
So in front of the new Justice Center, the conduits are in place, are they?
No, there's a good question. That was all redone when the Justice Center was, was...
There was, Jeff, just to interrupt you for a second, there were, were light fixtures in place there, but the bump out that they took, I believe they took those out at that particular, that space. So I walk by there sometime, well, at pretty much once, twice a week, and they're not there anymore. They were there, but they're not there anymore. Because they were, they were like any, I don't know, eight, ten feet apart, they're not there.
Well, that, that's what I was trying to get at the other day, when I, when I asked, when I asked Dave, is there going to, is everything in place? Is the hundred thousand going to cover everything? And I understand, I was, I was, I was made to understand that, yes, the conduit, in fact, in front of the Justice Center, they were there, but no longer because of the bump, bump in, bump outs? And is that, is that additional cost, is that reflective in our budget now, and where is it? And which line?
If, well, we have a hundred thousand budgeted, if there's additional cost in front of the Justice Center, then we'll have to look at what that is, and whether or not we put, I mean, it's a question whether or not you put the lamps in front of the Justice Center.
That's right.
You may just decide not to, to miss, to miss a light standard or two at that, at that point. Or you may decide to do it if the cost, if it makes sense to do it. I wouldn't suggest tearing up all that concrete for the sake of doing it. I think they probably have, do they have lighting outside?
They have all kinds of lighting, yeah.
Nicely lit, it's all landscape, so there's no...
Yeah, it is, it is nicely done, it looks nice.
You wouldn't even notice the lights were there.
No, no.
But now, because I'm not an electrician, I'm gonna take another, another thirty, thirty-seven seconds for this. So the lights come down to the Justice Center, the conduit is, is missing from here to here. What about the continuation from, from, from that part of, of the sidewalk, south?
I'm not an electrician, so I don't know.
No electricians in the room? Don't know the answer.
All right, there, I'll, we'll take this electrician.
Yeah, I think I can. My understanding from David is, is that the conduits are in the ground, but we're still using power from the poles above. We haven't buried the power wires. I mean, the power wires are still along the street.
Yes.
The conduits you're referring to are the, simply the conduits for the power going into these light poles, they're still attached to the, to the power poles across the street. So you're getting your power from, so it's just a matter of running a leader line into your respective pole.
Down in there, all right, thank you.
Unlike Main Street, where we buried, everything's been buried, so it's not really that, I don't think it's gonna be that much of an issue, it could be wrong, but when we looked at putting it in...
We'll find out.
We'll find out.
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor McCausick?
Well, thank you.
You've been very patient.
Very patient.
Thank you, thank you, thank you all, thank you all. Jeff, my question is, and it's, it's a shame that Dave's not here, cause he could probably get a lot of this answered, but that's all right.
We can, we can bring him up there, if there's some stuffs that we want to get answered.
Well, perhaps you could just, might, the questions be coming with all this stuff here?
Bring him up on Wednesday.
Yeah, probably Wednesday. But anyway, I'll just ask this question. And it's for culverts, culvert's replacement. Now, there, there is money here that's budgeted, and I'm, I'm looking at how he chooses replacement of culverts. Now, I know some that probably are just get, that needs replacement, but I'm just wondering if he looked at any replacement of any culverts, not, is it culverts, or curb, curb replacements?
The thirty-five thousand number? Yeah, curb replacement.
Yeah, well, you know what, I think I'm asking the wrong question, Jeff. What I was looking at was, when you walk down the sidewalk and then you go across the street and there's a break in it, like on, on Water Street. The cur, you know, the sidewalks, how they're made, and in order to get off somebody in a wheelchair or baby carriage, some sections you have to shoot out across. That's what I was gonna ask, if there's any consideration on making those, instead of jotting out into the street, make them straight. That's, that was, I, I, I ask pretty much that every year, if you go back, you'll see that I ask the same questions. If there's been any consideration on looking at Water Street and looking at, maybe making it more friendly, usable for people that are challenged, or, or people that are walking their, their children in carriages or whatever, or bikes, even bikes, so they don't have... A fine place, for an example, when you look at that, would be at Lobster Rock Wharf. Do you run a lot, when you get down there, if you was, you'd have to jot to the right or to the left into the street? And I was just wondering if we could just make it an easy flow.
There were, for whatever reason, that's the way they were built.
That's right.
And I know that there were some on Main Street that were like that.
Yes.
That have been changed in...
Yes, he's slowly changing those, and that's great. And that was also brought up, so that's, that's great, so I'm just, my, my...
When is he gonna continue that?
Yes, if he's gonna continue it on Water Street, and all, he's doing a fine job on Main Street, but maybe some consideration on Water Street, and that was my only question. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
The, under street lighting, the budget this year is one, one-five, last year was one-sixty-five. Is that a reflection of the LED lighting?
Yes, that is. We looked at the LED light project, is supposed to probably knock out...
Wow.
Close to a hundred thousand in, in total. But I know Dave's putting that out of tender, I think, this week, next week, kind of thing, it's ready to go, be in next year's budget, and the capital money set aside for that, so. So as those lights get installed, we'll start saving on our electric bill. So at this point, we knocked about fifty grand out of there for next year. And actually, in our forecast, those numbers should, I'll adjust the forecast numbers, they don't affect today's discussion, but they'll go down a little bit more for the future years as well. Cause that's the fifty thousand, not the full effect of LED lights. Okay? Okay, after we finish with the roads and streets, you get into traffic services. Pretty straightforward, I know there's a bump in the light maintenance, and I'm trying to think of which one that is. David made a note. Re- replacing controllers on a traffic light, cost about twenty-five thousand, that's the bump up in that budget for this year. Your public transit line, and then some parking service expenses. All flows through down to the total transportation line of two-point-seven million, which is, you'll see up on line eleven, or number of eleven on your summary page.
Two-point-seven.
No further questions there, we'll move over to environmental health services, starts on page nineteen.
Oh, Counselor Dennis, sorry, I just... Are we going to keep the public transit expense in the budget for this year? Cause Huts Transit is closing, so are we going to try to find someone else?
Jeff, you can, do you wanna?
Okay, so we, we did an RFP to, to attract proposals, to review our transit needs, and design a transit system that best address those needs. We've had the, the Huts Transit Services run for almost twenty years, and I don't know that there's been much change to the schedule, other than obviously when, when Walmart opened, I think Walmart was added as a stop, that kind of thing. But I don't think there's been much change in terms of the, the system, nor, nor any real review of it. And so the, the RFP will do that, it will look at, look at the community, look at the needs, and design a transit system to, to address that. And Mr. Hudson has identified that he's not interested in continuing to be a transit provider beyond the end of April. So we could reduce that, we will have some costs related to doing that study. We had one proposal come in, and we are, we are going to be applying for fifty percent of the funding of that, of that study. So we wouldn't require the, the whole allocation that's there in order to do the study, but it's what we do from that point on that might cost us more. So once we have in hand a, a recommendation from the consultant, which will include a confidential business plan that he believes is, is, is reasonable to deliver that service, then we can consider putting that out for tender, putting the service out for tender, and comparing the bids against his business plan, and deciding for ourselves, would we want to operate, you know, in other words, bid ourselves based on the business plan against the private sector proposals that we might receive. So we'll need some money for that if we're going to have a transit system beyond the end of April. And it's, it's really a guess at this point, how much that would be this year. I could, you know, we, we talk about the transit proposal, I can tell you, you know, what, what the, the bid was for that, and what we expect our costs to be, but I can't tell you what the cost of getting a service in place is going to be. Could be more than what's there.
Yeah.
To up the budget?
Well, again, it's a guess, and so what I'd suggest, perhaps, at this point, is, is to leave the number alone, and it will either be higher or lower, we won't hit the target exactly as we have in, in recent years, because we've had this arrangement with Mr. Hudson. But we'll know better for two thousand fifteen, sixteen, what our costs will be based on where we end up going through this process.
So the money will be there, though, if we, if we need more money?
Well, if we need more money, we'll come back to council. And what we would suggest at that point is looking at, you know, if we needed money in this fiscal year, if there was no slippage in the budget that we could absorb it, we would look at recommending you do a transfer out of accumulated surplus to offset the balance of the operating costs for this year, and then next year, build in the, the full cost of the known service at that point.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, am I next?
Yeah, you're next.
Thank you, your worship. And I, I agree with Jeff, I think we should keep it in there, I know myself and Counselor McCausick have had discussions with user groups like the Hope Center or Claritin Robishow that could be interested in providing a service, and like Jeff pointed out, Mr. Hudson was in business for eighteen years, and there wasn't much change in the routes, except for maybe the high school one and, and the Walmart, so any other group that comes in, nonprofit organization or for-profit transit system, and there's gonna have to be a municipal component to it, but I think leaving it in would be the prudent thing to do this year. I'd like to see a continuation of the service, and I'd, I actually brought it up for a little discussion later, but probably we won't get, get to that until Wednesday, but I think we have some alternatives, but it's gonna have to be a community-based service, and I think with the RFP, that'll take care of that component. Thank you.
Good. Okay. Go ahead, Jerry.
I think that wrapped up page eighteen, I'm not, total transportation services, two-point-seven million. The next section that we go through is the environmental health services, dealing with sewage treatment plant. Go through wages, liability insurance, the actual operation of our, our pipes, lift stations, and what gets charged off for vehicles through the, that portion of the title services. And then the sewage, the actual sewage plant cost, end up with a total sewage collection of one-point-five.
Counselor Dawes, you have questions?
Thank you, yeah, you know I have to ask this. The second line, liability insurance, we, that, where'd the ten thousand dollars come from, or go to?
There was a, a claim payout there for sewage backup or something this year.
Oh. Thank you. Does that happen often?
No.
No, I think that's...
Every five, ten, twenty years or so?
I think that's the first one that I've...
I was gonna say, I, I don't remember another one.
Yep, go ahead, deputy.
Je- Jerry and Jeff, the...
No, it's our fault.
Manhole, manhole repair is twenty grand this year, so we must have projects there. Projects, further under, under projects itself, we have twenty-five thousand, last year is zero. And equipment supplies double over the previous year down in sewage plant. And building maintenance, so we must have some extra maintenance going, going on this year, it's sixty grand.
I know on the projects, on the projects, the twenty-five thousand, there's a note from Dave, he's looking to dredge a section of Broad Brook. And in the other line, manhole repairs, I don't have a note on it.
That's good to know, that one, though. Counselor McCausick?
Thank you, your worship. Jeff, this is just an observation that I've, I've noticed just in the last little while, down by the treatment plant, and I see some, this leads up to it. The cement sleeves that are holding the pipe in place, the outflow pipe in place at the treatment plant, there's quite a charge room that's off, off there, that's come right off, broke off. And I don't know if it's probably due to ice or whatever, but if you look in the harbor, low tide, you'll see a lot of them laying a little, a distance from the pipe. Now, I don't know if that pipe is going to at some time float up, or there's enough water or whatever that's in it to keep it down, but those sleeves were in there for a purpose, and the majority of them are now off, so maybe it's no need to worry, but I don't know if anybody's brought it to your attention, or Dave's?
Yeah, Counselor Dawes sent me a photo on Saturday, which I forwarded on to Dave. Dave probably saw that this morning, and will deal with it. But actually, I'll, I'll just take the opportunity to reference the, the email I sent you on Friday concerning the after-hours number. Counselor Dawes had, I just had a discussion with her, and I think for benefit of everyone, because she didn't understand, I guess, what, what the purpose of the number was, is that when you see something like that, whether it's potholes on Vancouver Street, or a displaced pipe, and you're concerned that there might be an immediate issue, call the after-hours number, the public, the dispatch at the fire hall. So if it's something that you think needs my attention, obviously potholes and sewer pipes might not be, I might not be the best person, but on, whether it's an animal issue, or a pipe or a pothole, they will call the public works supervisor on call, and they will, in the case of a pothole, they can put out a sign that says, you know, bump in, in the immediate, and if it's something like the, the pipe, they probably can't do anything about that immediately, but there is no imminent danger to, to anybody at that point either.
I didn't think there was any danger or anything like that, but it's been a way for, for a bit, and I just, it just ain't like that, and I was just, I was, that was not probably just a mention, I mean, if I said there ain't no, in the future, it never will.
Well, we've gotta get it, we gotta get it reset, so that it, there's no damage done to it, if there is, if there hasn't been already. Obviously, some damage has been done to the, to the cradles that, that held that pipe, so that'll have to be done. I'll just refer, I have referred it to Dave, and I'm not sure if we're gonna need permitting to get down there on the, on the mud to fix it, or, or what, but...
Good. Okay. Jerry?
So when you continue down, there's another line I'll just point out, and that's like the, the digester cleaning, and we budget twenty thousand a year for that. And again, that's one of those things that happens about every fifth year, and it costs about a hundred grand to do, so we budget twenty thousand a year for that. Again, pretty consistent way the sewage plant runs. We're going through some different staffing changes there, but that's budget for the full complement, which we should have shortly, I understand, so.
Did you ever get a full complement down there now? I know we went through a couple of changes.
Not yet, I don't...
Not right yet.
Okay.
Okay.
Are we, we're expecting-
We were down a person, we did hire, fill that full-time position, and right now we have one going off on a short term, like a four-month mat leave or something, so that might, that's hard to fill, get someone to come in for four months, five months, so.
Building maintenance. Go ahead, Councilor Dawes.
Thank you very much, your worship. We're expecting some major maintenance, maintenance coming up on the building this year because we're budgeting sixty thousand. I'm sorry, under sewer plant, second last, second last line.
Building maintenance, see if I got a note on that.
We budgeted for thirteen fourteen, we budgeted just under thirty-five thousand, actually spent was just over twenty-three thousand, but we are budgeting for this fourteen fifteen fiscal year just under sixty thousand.
Yeah, and I can, I brought my file, I didn't bring notes from Dave with me. I don't have a note. Most of the notes are put on my sheet here, but-
Oh, okay.
I don't have a reason for that one with me. I'll get that.
Okay. Good.
Okay. Next page, which is page twenty, at the, a few expenses that we still have from the old landfill operation. The big one is our town tipping charges that go through there, and that's our cost. The town's residence waste being brought over to this transfer station. Landfill closure, we still have to test, do water testing and soil testing out there. And then you have our collection contracts paid for out of there. And the last little bit there is the solid waste reduction. And basically, it's a bit of waste check type of charge that we pay there. Some green bins and some admin fees through waste check that we pay, help pay further support, pay their staff. Contracts, obviously, the big one there. Dave handles those negotiations and those are his numbers. Page twenty-one is the end of the environmental health, gets into the compost facility. Again, we have the full operations there this year in this draft budget. So, those numbers are based on what we looked at doing. Maybe some changes there based on recent, more recent decisions. But our total environmental health, two million eight hundred seventy thousand, that number flows through again into the front page as line twelve under expenditures. Questions about the compost facility, come from there. Page twenty-two, we start with environmental development services. Again, that's planning and our planning department. We've got some money plugged in there for the planning strategy review. Again, I think we put seventy-five thousand over and above, but a couple thousand there. And, and you'll see in the forecast, twenty-seven thousand more. So, we plug that number in for our priority to get done. Rest are regular operations of the planning department. And then you get into our GIS tech and some of the costs of having that department with just some mapping, software, maintenance and vehicle.
The question's here, but it's not that much money and I see it every time is, I like probably asking the Jeff, Jeff, what about, I see marked gas, do we use marked gas in all our vehicles?
What's marked gas, first of all?
It's usually with the tax component taken out.
Oh, okay.
Until they die.
Yeah, yes. Yes, marked gas is used at the, at the public works facility. We have our own fuel tank there and it's used exclusively for our town-owned vehicles. And so, it is marked gas, you're right, it's a taxation issue. It's not for resale, so like down on the waterfront at the marina, we resell gas, so it wouldn't be marked gas. But, yeah.
What about, what about fire company, is that, do we have like, do we have a diesel and, and a regular or do we have just one? The fire trucks must be the diesel fan, you know?
They are, they are diesel for sure. And I have to confess, I'm not knowing if they, if they fill up at our facility or if we purchase it outside, but I expect they would fill at our facility.
Pretty sure they do, pretty sure there's two up there.
Councilor Langel?
Just on the compost facility, under revenue, looking at page ten, the only thing I can find there would be composter revenue, which is fifty-eight forty-four. Is that, that number reflects how much money we're making selling compost? I'm on page ten, under general revenue, I'm just trying to figure out where the revenue is for the compost sales. I'm assuming that's it, composter revenue, or is that the actual compost bins themselves?
That's the bins themselves.
So, where do we, where do we record the compost revenue? Because I do know we are selling compost out at the compost facility. Where's that at?
We have that. There's the composter revenue. You might be up there looking here.
I'm just, don't, don't, I wanna hold things up, your worship, but I, I wouldn't mind to get a, I wouldn't mind to get a breakdown on what the revenue is, if at all possible for next meeting.
Did you find it already, Jeff?
No.
There is a small, there is a line in there for-
It's on your list?
Yeah, I'm gonna ask that question. Yeah, so you could do that. Second question I was gonna ask, which, yeah, I'm gonna go back to that one, which I was a little bit concerned, maybe it's a typo and I'm trying to figure it out on twenty, on, no, we haven't got to it yet, so I'll hold it, it's on twenty-three, we haven't got to community development yet, I apologize.
Okay, go ahead, Jerry.
Okay, so on twenty-two, again, planning department, GIS department. Relatively straightforward.
So Tracy gets broken up in a couple of different categories?
Tracy does get broken up into a couple of spots. Page twenty-three, community development, some of the heritage lines up top. Again, there's, other than the salaries and benefits, there's not a lot that goes through. We do have some maintenance that we've done and we just-
What kind of maintenance?
The maintenance this year was done across the street of the Senetaph.
Across, across, across the street?
The Senetaph?
Oh, the Senetaph, oh, all right.
Thank you.
So, there's typically some little things done through there, but this year there was a bigger project done and where there were some funding came in for that as well, but this is the expense side of it, so. There was some funding come through for that eighteen thousand.
Nineteen thousand dollars?
I think it was six thousand.
Six thousand, number six, I think.
As a, as a grant to go towards that eighteen this year.
Okay.
The next little section, we looked at some of the downtown or Main Street items that we've done over the years, the last few years, and we've ended up getting some breakdown this way. Again, we kinda took what we used to have as a one-line budget and broken into five or six different items.
So, when we want these, the bump outs and things like that, we're gonna take that acoustics plan, do something with it. Tell me where that is again?
Yeah, our, with our priorities, we looked at a hundred and fifty thousand. And when we looked at those types of things, those would be a capital nature, so we'll work those into our capital budget somewhere.
Oh, okay. Oh, so, did you have a question?
They're looking under environmental services, Jerry, it has ferry service plus all hands. What's, what's that? Thirty-six thousand three, is that the Nova Scotia Ferry Partnership or?
Yeah, that was some of the expenses that we had dealing with getting the ferry here over the last year. Plus all hands, we expected, I expected a few items to come in for some of those meetings, but there really wasn't much other than a few hundred dollars, I think. I think if you looked at that, thirty-six thousand, three hundred and ninety-three, probably thirty-six thousand of it had to do with ferry. So, yeah, not sure what else to say, if I decide I can get details of thirty-six thousand if we need it, but.
I didn't, I didn't know that there was a budget for all hands.
I don't.
There isn't. There isn't. There's no budget for it.
Yeah.
We do have money in, we talked about studies, like the transit, that we do have forty thousand in the budget for doing different studies. Other than that's, you know, based, these are kinda based on what the different Mariner Center, Industrial Commission Airport type of things that they'll need or require for their funding. The forty thousand dollars, we have forty thousand for community events this year. There's been no specific community event tagged this year. Last year with the seventy-five, there was the ball hockey and the junior A challenge. Those two numbers came into that line.
Councilor Dawes, you have?
Thank you, your worship. Back up to urban renewal projects, just up one. Milton clock, you've got zero, 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 that's, that's always nice to see, but we have two clocks. The one on, oh, the one in the parking lot, right across from the, from the Y. Would that be included with this? Are you, are you putting both clocks together? I don't understand why the Milton clock is in there at all and, and, and not the other clock that's just down the street on-
Yeah, there's been no charge there. I mean, typically all, if, if it's, you see all zeros around, I'll just eliminate that line because it's, there's been nothing for a number of years on that line. The one in the parking lot, I think that probably gets charged in through that, it used to be taken care of by the YDC, I believe. So, there was never any expense for that. I think in the last couple of years, we probably put it through, trying to think where it would've went, it would've went into one of those, that flower, garbage, power line, those are the typical things that the YDC would've done on Main Street.
All right.
So, it's either in there.
But then that begs my question, why would the Milton clock then not be under the Waterfront Development Corporation if this one, if, if the other one was, was, was categorized under, under the YDC, which doesn't exist? And if there's any painting that's done or any, 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 any paint?
That line would've been added at a time when there was actually something, a project, a one-off project. And we leave those on, those, those lines end up staying on there for a couple of years just for, because if we delete it, we lose the comparability, you know, in terms of Jerry's spreadsheet has ten years of data in it, you're seeing, you're seeing two. So, you could hide that line now because there's no, because there's no charges to it.
All right.
It wouldn't go to the Waterfront Development because they don't do operations. They simply develop stuff and turn it over to the, to the town. They develop that park, put the clock there, turn it over to the town, have a nice day. So, our parks department carries all the maintenance costs. So, if there were maintenance items related to that clock, they would be more appropriately within our parks budget as opposed to standing alone.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
It was just so blatantly there and the other one was so blatantly missing, that's why I had to ask. Thank you. Are we down to the economic development officer yet?
Yeah, I can tell you that the hundred and twenty-five thousand, that was for the investment readiness. That's where we plugged that for our priority.
Oh, investment readiness. Oh, all right, all right. Because I was gonna ask, how many people, how many people do we expect to, to employ under this heading?
No, we didn't really know where to plug that number in, so we put it there just so it, it's in our numbers. So, that's the investment readiness piece.
Okay, so, did you just answer the question like one?
The hundred and twenty-five thousand?
What's in that one twenty-five?
That is just our number for the priority of investment readiness.
Okay, which could be a person.
Could be a person, could be-
Studies, paper, everything, okay.
That's just the number we have, could be a-
Yeah, it will be carrying, it will be carrying that project forward and so it will probably involve person, but it will probably also involve all the other costs other than just having a person sitting in a chair.
Yeah, exactly.
Of getting, advancing us, I guess, along that, along that process.
Okay.
To investment attraction and growing the tax base.
One second.
At the bottom of that page, the one point six million flows through to the front page summary of environmental development services.
Put your back on, Jeff.
Recreation and cultural services, page twenty-four. The top couple of lines are our share of recreation department. We get a bill from municipality for those numbers.
I'm sorry, is that a fifty-fifty share?
Yes.
Okay.
And we get into our parks department, some salaries and benefits. And then you get into the parks maintenance lines and we go down through those, we budget for tree maintenance, planting, the water sewers or different parks that have water in it. The community bloom budget does, does fall into the parks budget lines. Lot of five, fifteen thousand dollar numbers there. Not sure if there's any questions on the parks section.
Good? Oh, sorry.
Communities in Bloom in that section, we upped that amount and the reason we upped that amount was, we asked for it is because this year, the national communities in Bloom is going to be in PEI and we wanted to, it only comes in this region once every four years. And we have written as a town to national communities in Bloom for consideration for twenty eighteen here in the town of Yarmouth, and we've so far been getting a positive response. Now, given that we've now got this new budget for council travel, that's gonna cause some hiccups, I suspect. That's why we put the extra money in there for people to be able to go to that without messing up their other. Because I'm kinda doing my, I'm doing my budgeting right now in my mind, I've got fifty-eight hundred, that will get me the UNSM spring workshop, get me the UNSM fall session in the communities in Bloom, and that'll be it. I'm pretty well shot for budget-wise, which is fine, but if there's anything else comes up, you're pretty well, you're done at that point because the UNSM will be in Cape Breton this fall. So, I'm just saying it's, that's why we put that money in there. So, if we're gonna be going with the idea that we're not, we're gonna be using it on individual council amounts, then we don't need that extra five thousand in communities in Bloom. Because that was why we asked for the additional money to handle, councilors to go over to the national communities in Bloom in PEI. I don't know whether Phil you or anybody else wanted to comment, but that's why we put the extra dollars in there.
In the, in the last couple of years, we've sent a delegation and it, one year is Councilor Mackay's wife and Amy Hilliard from waste checking and a few years before that's been Dave Warner and Dave Solos, and then last year was Dave Warner and Dave Solos. And the thought around the communities in Bloom table was increase the budget a little bit, we're applying, we're looking down the road a little bit, like you said, twenty eighteen. The response has been positive to bringing that national convention here to Yarmouth, so I think it was more of a selling idea to go over there to Prince Edward Island, so I don't know how that would work under the, under the new travel policy, but I think sometimes when you go to these conferences, it's, it's, Saritha and Amy came back with a tremendous amount of information, as in Dave and Dave, Dave and Dave, but sometimes when you're going to these meetings and conferences and conventions, if you're trying to bid on something or get somebody to come here, they actually might like to see an elected official in that equation. So, I don't know how that would work in that. I know, you know, I, I'd have no, any one of the members of that committee would be a great asset over there in Prince Edward Island trying to sell our community, but I think there should be an elected person in that situation too. But that's, that's an interesting point with the new travel guidelines in place.
Your worship, it also begs back to saltscapes, for example, which we touched on, same deal. I mean, that's gonna eat out of whoever goes, Councilor Dennis or whoever goes, that's gonna chomp out of their travel budget before you're done, a good twelve hundred dollars time you cover hotel meals and all that good stuff. And that's not really a, you're working, it's, it's a working project there. You're not attending a conference or getting information, you're actually gonna be working in the area. So, it's a, it's a concern, like how do you, how do, you know, there's kind of, some of these things, it's a, it's a balance and I don't know what the answer is. I'm just throwing it out for, you know, for the thought. I'm just throwing it out for, you know, for thought.
Is that on our list to discuss? Thank you. Good? Go ahead, Jerry.
It's already over, so just, just the first four.
All right.
Any other questions around parks? If not, we'll move on to page twenty-five, which is the last of the detailed pages. We get into the Waterfront Marina, and what it takes to operate that for the town. Got some light maintenance. I'm just trying to see if I have any notes on that one. Looking at, yeah, replacing, there's six poles and fixtures down there that we'd like to replace this year. It's in the budget for twenty-five thousand. And in the, I don't have a reason for the building maintenance, but I can find out from Dave what that's, what that's about.
Councilor McCausick, did you want to?
Just a quick question. It might be on here, but I don't see it real quickly.
Yep.
Boats that mourn at our docks at the waterfront.
Yep.
Do they pay a fee for being there?
They pay a berthage fee, yes.
A berthage fee. Is that in here anywhere?
Yeah, that would be in, in under one of the revenue lines, and it's probably under other.
Waterfront Marina.
Is it from owned sources? That's what I thought was in under, otherwise I'm not seeing that specific line.
It's in page nine? Okay. Great. That's it. Thanks.
While we're on page nine, just out of idle care, what's an internal lease? Three hundred and fifteen thousand nine seventy-five revenue. We're obviously internally leasing something.
That's, again, that's where we've shown that there is a cost to having an administration department somewhere in the fire department.
Okay, I understand. Yeah, okay. Water utility, stuff like that.
But, okay, good.
Usually shows up as cost, and this is the revenue offset, so it's a zero effect on the factory.
Councilor Mooney?
Yeah, I have a question, just a little further down the list. We haven't got that far yet, but since we're at the Sweeney's Museum. I haven't made an note there, Jeff. I know the lease is done.
Yep. Yeah, the lease expired in that building a couple of years ago. When, when that lease was originally set up, there were, there were some projects done by the town to offset a lease cost for, let's say, fifteen years or so. They included the parking lots on this-